Councilor Woodruff. Councilor Yasi. And Mayor Yusef.
Uh, Mayor, we're not hearing anything on our end. On the Zoom meeting.
Hi, Madam Mayor, hi, Council. Um, yeah, we have our upcoming, our second ever Engage Forum, uh, Engage Drango Forum that's happening on Tuesday, the twenty eighth. It's gonna go from five o'clock to six thirty at the library. Devin Schmidt with, uh, it's gonna be, uh, presenting on the budget and giving an overall kind of high-level view of, uh, our city budget, the municipal budget, and then we are, she's also gonna talk about how, folks can get involved in that process and what that timeline looks like throughout the fiscal year. So, that's the presentation. From there, we're gonna break out, um, into a question and answer. And then from there, we'll break out into our session, or table session, where you can meet with, uh, all sorts of department, all of the departments, the department head staff, and, um, have more one-on-one conversations with them. So, um, sticking with that format from the first one, we're really excited about it. Um, let's see, we're also working on standardizing our approach, um, so, uh, for public meetings in general. So, looking at making sure that we have Spanish interpretation at each one of them, as well as childcare offerings. Um, so, we're taking the guest work out for our community members, so. Um, that's what's coming up. The next one after Tuesday's meeting will be, uh, on January twenty-third. We're having on the fourth Tuesday of every other month, so, um, not to be confused with the last Tuesday of the month, because there's five Tuesdays in January. Alright, and that's all there.
The students during their time of service, I see it as a really great opportunity to connect with our students. It empowers our youth by giving them a platform to voice their opinions, ideas, and concerns. It fosters civic engagement among our youth as they learn about the importance of civic responsibility and being a role model for the community. It provides leadership opportunities for the students as they take on various leadership roles within the organization, and allows them to select and participate in community service projects over their year of service, providing venues for them to contribute to the betterment of our community. So, I'm very, very proud of this year's group of my X students, and it's been fun to get to know them. We have some really engaged and active students this year, um, and we have them with us here today, a couple of them here today, and I'm gonna pass it to Ben to also introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Yusef and Council. Um, again, my name is Ben Florine, uh, Chief Deputy Clerk in the Clerk's Office. And I'm also the staff liaison to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. And so, uh, though we're just kicking off the program this year, uh, we've had a lot of great, um, success and meetups and kinda getting organized for this year's program so far. We accepted applications all summer, and I believe by the end of September, we had a meet and greet kinda team-building day, uh, where we met up with all eleven of this year's, um, Myak, Myak students. We have a lot of great programs, um, that we're mapping out right now for, uh, the last couple of weeks of this year, and then also kicking it off strong in twenty twenty-four, uh, with a few different programs that the teens are working on. And so, with that said, um, I'll hand it over to, uh, Ethan McGinnis, one of our co-chairs, and, uh, and, uh, we will talk more about, uh, the rest of the program for this year.
Great, thank you, Ben. Um, I wanna start by thanking, uh, you all for your support of this incredible program. It's such a great opportunity for students in the Drango area to kinda help give back to the community and learn, while, you know, do, uh, taking part in that process. Uh, so far this year, it's been pretty busy. We've had, uh, done a variety of different projects in partnership with the, the, uh, the rec center and done some team-building and meet and greets, and we're starting to plan out what our, uh, uh, year is going to look like, and we've got several potential projects on the book, or books. We're looking at, uh, doing a trail cleanup in partnership with Drango High School's Green Team. And we're also hoping to do a continuation of, uh, a program that I set in motion last year with, with the Drango Cowboy Gathering, doing a poetry and art contest with, uh, some youth across the, uh, the city. And, uh, Willa, our secretary with the, with the commission, is gonna be helping me this year, and, uh, should hopefully be pretty successful.
Thank you so much. Any comments from Council? If I could get you guys, will you please come forward so we can get a photo? Just come right in front of Council, right here. We really appreciate you guys being here, just right here, so we can get a photo with us, too. Uh, that's good, too. We better stand up then. Willa and Ethan, would you guys wanna come right here so that we can be a little closer with you? There you go. No, you're good, you're good, you're fine. Stand up. Thank you, guys. Yes, thank you so much. Good job. Thanks for being here. Okay, but there's no, okay, okay, I'll just note that. Thank you, Willa and Ethan. Um, and with that, I'm gonna just let, for the record, uh, people know that we, um, do have our translator available, uh, but we will not be having an interruption this morning, or this evening. The day's going fast, I guess. Um, alright, with that, moving to committee board and liaison reports, Council? Who would like to go first?
Sure. Um, I only had one this time, so we had the Chamber of Commerce, uh, meeting last week. It's just in that interfere with the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, we had a, a pretty, pretty quick meeting, uh, this time, but there's a lot going on with the, with the chamber. Um, they got plenty of, um, nominees for the Drango Rocks Award, so they're really, really excited to kinda get that up in our hands to celebrate our local business community. Um, additionally, um, there's a lot of things coming through the legislature potentially, so we're keeping an eye on some things that could potentially impact businesses. Um, so they're really keeping up on the pulse, you know, everything from short-term rental tax rate to, um, Fair Work Week scheduling, um, a lot of things on that front. Um, but yeah, they had their, the, um, the YPODs, um, the professionals of Drango, had their big, uh, get-together, uh, last week over at the casino, and, I guess, two weeks ago at the casino now. Um, but yeah, they had a great time, good, good turnout, and a lot of good opportunities for collaboration and mentorship. So, yeah, they're super excited. I was not able to make it, unfortunately.
Um, okay, I had the Alliance Board meetings, there's a, two of them, but, um, the biggest thing, I think, that, um, what we discussed is there, uh, the opportunity now, Grant is, um, kind of in full force, and they're moving through, and they're doing two micro-certifications starting in the spring, one around childcare and one around leadership management. Um, and it's gonna be all free to enroll in the course, um, and so if you have anyone within your life, or, um, if you own a business and someone could be really great at leadership management, um, kinda keep your eye on that for those micro-certifications coming out in the spring. Um, they did talk about, um, our, the RHA, which Gilson might bring up, but, oh, one of the big things that they're really looking for and focusing on, um, during their strategic planning sessions is sustainable funding, a sustainable funding source for the RHA, since they're doing such great work, um, right now, and so those were like the two big things that we talked about. The Alliance meeting.
Great, thank you. Other councilors?
Okay, so, um, yes, I did attend the RHA, which is the Regional Housing Authority meeting, and basically they, we are gonna try to focus on creating some kind of sustainable, um, operational funding. So, we're all brainstorming about that, and plus, we reviewed a lot of that, like, fair share housing and some of the projects that are happening in the whole community, because at this meeting, you know, all the other, like Bayfield, Ignacio, the, um, the county and us. And I can't remember who else was there, but, um, I think we're feeling pretty good now that with the work that's been completed in the past, and what we've got going forward, but we are, are, we are concerned about funding. And also, I attended the library meeting on November fifteenth, and, um, the topic of going forward with the library district came up a few different times, and so we did discuss that further, and we're looking at options for that, and there's gonna be some research done, and then we'll discuss that more. Then we also discussed about, um, the lack of participation from, um, I think some Mothers of Liberty, and, and why we don't have a lot of people protesting the books that we have presented at the library. And it, it, and I asked, um, well, why is this? And it turns out that in two thousand eighteen, the previous City Council passed an ordinance that was, um, beneficial to our library to avoid having, um, people ban books from public display. So, those are the main two topics that we talked about, plus we, we also, um, gave a big shout-out to the Friends of the Library, because they're very supportive of the library, and they do a lot to provide social functions there. But the most interesting thing I did, and also they participated, they participated in, uh, November ninth, we came to participate in the MOX, um, what, City Council with the third graders from Park Elementary School. And, um, that was just very precious, and, you know, all the administrators were there, like Chief and, who else was there? And it was just really empowering to see the kids come up here and, you know, become city councilors and listen to the presentations and then vote, and then how they conduct, conducted their meeting. Um, it was really precious, so I think that's a really valuable program, and, um, you know, when I got home, I thought, hey, maybe this is how we should conduct our meetings. But that, that was really nice, and I appreciate the effort by the staff putting that, uh, forward for, um, Park Elementary, because I think it's a really valuable resource.
Excellent. Thank you so much for attending, man. That's great. Councilor Bosnus, do you have any? Okay, um, we, it has like another, uh, couple, couple of busy weeks between council meetings. We did have our, uh, joint meeting, uh, with City Council on the Southern Indian Tribe in Ignacio, in their City Council chambers, and our city staff did a very good job providing some helpful updates on some of our important city projects. I did have a Myak meeting, um, they're meeting now twice a month, and Mayor Protem Buehl will attend their next meeting, so they'll have the opportunity to meet with her and get to know her, and she can get to know them. It's really a great group. Um, I had our Airport Commission meeting for November. All is on track, uh, no major updates, um, at this time for that. Um, and we did have the key exchange for the Civic Center and River City Hall, which was another big step for the city and an amazing accomplishment after years and years of trying to find suitable colocation for both the DFD and City Hall. So, that was really nice celebrations. And with that, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any comment? This is for items eight, nine, and eleven. Okay, so we'll just move on. Do we have anyone virtually that'd like to comment before I move?
Uh, no, Mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. No, this is just public comment for items that we're discussing today on our business agenda. And then there's another section for public comment for non-agenda-related items, item number thirteen. Okay? Alright, with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda, if we could get a reading of the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item eight point one is approval of meeting minutes. Um, and that's from, the, the minutes from November seventh, twenty twenty-three City Council Regulator Meeting. Uh, there are no final readings, final reading ordinances, uh, no items, uh, for adoption by consent. And then, lastly, item eight point four point one, approval of other administrative items, is appointment of an additional applicant to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. And, excuse me, the last item, eight point five, Land Use and Development Action Items, there are no items.
Uh, great, thank you. Uh, is there any councilor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Buehl.
Yes.
Mayor Yusef.
Yes.
Councilor Bosnus.
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff.
Yes.
And Councilor Yasi.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, moving on, we have no land use and development action items, um, no resolutions. Moving on to eleven point one, resolution approving updates to the Fair Share Administrative Manual. Staff presentation. Oh, Scott, you gonna join us?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Scott Shine with the Community Development Department. Um, I'm very excited to be able to do a quick introduction, um, regarding a package of programming code updates that we're bringing before you tonight. Um, as you can see on this slide, this is gonna relate to three different agenda items, but all of those, uh, connect to each other or interrelate, and so we thought we'd do one overall introduction instead of repeating ourselves three different times, just to, um, give you that bigger picture and also, um, help the meeting move a little more efficiently. So, um, I'll explain a little bit about the origin of all these, uh, program and code updates, and then Eva and Lily will help, uh, dig into the substance of these updates. But you can see here, it relates to those three items around our fair share program. We're, uh, proposing a resolution to update that administrative manual, and then two ordinances related to updates to the Land Use and Development Code around the boards and commissions that are administered by the Community Development Department, um, some process improvements, and some minor program updates related to accessory dwelling units. All of these do align with, um, the strategic plan, and I think are great examples of how really thoughtful and focused strategic planning and, and work planning can lead to tangible outcomes. Um, so the work that you all have done to, to provide that strategic guidance has really helped our team, uh, focus throughout the year. This is, this is the result of a long process, a lot of conversations with the community, a lot of outreach to the community, back and forth, and, and having that strategic plan guiding us and saying, these are what the priority should be, has been really helpful for our team to stay motivated and stay focused throughout a lengthy, um, um, process. So, these updates primarily relate to affordability and economic opportunity, um, but definitely also touch on, um, supporting a high-performing government. Uh, we did a lot of research on peer communities, on communities that have been recognized for being high performers, for, uh, leading the way in, in some of these areas around housing and around development review. And we, we gleaned insights from those other communities and learned things from them, while also trying to, you know, apply a little bit of a Drango, uh, flair to these, uh, updates that we're proposing. So, all of these help to achieve the strategic plan. You've seen this slide before, but, um, the, the, the department did come up with a work plan that we shared with you, uh, right off the bat in January of this year. Um, and these updates touch on three buckets, um, in this work plan, and, and really help us advance our partnerships, um, with the community, um, help us to improve our procedures, our processes, and, and provide better service delivery to our customers. Um, and also, they're obviously related to code reform, making sure that the, the specific standards that, that govern development, that govern how our community grows, uh, aligned with best practice and aligned with overarching, uh, guiding documents that have, have come from the community. So, we're excited to kind of get to the year-end and have some real tangible accomplishments to share with you and, and discuss tonight. Lastly, before I turn it over to Eva on this resolution, uh, we presented our customer service strategy to Council back in September. That came out of a lot of, of work and dialogue with our customers. Uh, these updates regarding the fair share program, regarding the development review process, and, um, thinking about how our boards and commissions act, really help us advance, uh, the goals of our customer service strategy, particularly around efficient assistance, making sure that we're not just having procedures for the sake of, of doing things, but they all have a purpose, and they're really targeted towards outcomes. Being able to communicate clearly and consistently about why procedures are in place and, and how those function, and then also being able to adapt solutions to the context or to the unique elements of different projects. So, um, I hope that helps you kinda get the context and the, the setting from which all of these, uh, proposals came from, and we look forward to digging in now to the substance and, and having, uh, conversation with Council as we move forward. So, thank you. I'll turn it over to Eva.
Good evening. Eva Hinson, Housing and Aviation Manager. Tonight, we'll be discussing a resolution to update the Fair Share Manual pertaining to the Fair Share Program. So, this is a staff-initiated request to update the Fair Share Administrative Manual. These are minor edits to simplify processes or improve clarity and consistency, as Scott mentioned. There are references throughout the manual that used to be tied to the Regional Housing Alliance. Now, it's tied to our nonprofit partner Homes Fund, so a lot of clarity and just cleanup throughout the manual for that purpose in partnership and conjunction with city staff to administer fair share. And the changes to work in, the changes work in tandem with the proposed text amendments that'll be a little bit later on your agenda, uh, pertaining to the ordinance and the actual text amendments to the land use development code. So, we're in a little unique scenario where I'll talk about the resolution for the administrative processes, and then we'll come back before you and talk a little bit more in-depth about the fair share program and the ordinance and those text amendments. Again, there's some flexibility built into this, which is why we wanna keep that to be nimble, flexible, some market conditions with that resolution moving forward. And then the most substantial changes are reducing the barrier of no third-party subsidies allowed, right? So, that's currently conflicting with our strategic goals for the organization and our plan with affordability and economic opportunity, and so we wanna reduce those and incentivize, you know, facilitate construction, as well as bridge that disparity cost between homeownership and rental pricing. Fair share is not gonna be the silver bullet, but it's certainly a great tool for us to use to create new development for affordable and attainable housing. It ties with our policy and code reform, and again, new housing development. But as you all know, we're also looking for partnership opportunities for adaptive reuse. We're gonna look for opportunities with land acquisition or other opportunities for existing structures. We wanna do preservation of. of existing housing. And of course, the key part of any part of housing in the in the complexities is funding sources. Again, fair share was adopted in two thousand and nine. We'll talk a little bit about inclusionary zoning when I come back before you with the ordinance and the text amendments, if that's okay. This is to enhance potential public-private partnerships, as we've mentioned. This will also help utilize local resources to bridge the cost disparity between those rental and homeownership prices. And we want to utilize the housing funds to facilitate and incentivize unit construction while leveraging local state and funding opportunities. This also ties in with the, as I mentioned, the Fair Share Manual specifically states, it's anticipated that this manual may be amended from time to time by resolution of the City Council in response to changed housing market conditions. And opportunities to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of administering the provisions, which says Article seventeen, but this cleanup will now reference it accordingly and correctly to Article five point four. A little bit about a community engagement, next steps. We've come before City Council a few different times throughout the year about fair share. In particular, we actually extended the term of the fair share program amounts and maximal affordable housing prices. That helps some solutions with current projects in the pipeline. While we work with our housing consultant root policy research to make enhancements and propose recommendations um, about the program. We've also identified with study session uh, more recently in September about these sort of packaged code amendments coming before you now. We're at tonight where we're gonna be doing the proposed resolution. Also text amendments, I like to look at as a two-pronged approach, two parts. Kind of do a fair share part one, and they'll be coming back before you later in December with root policy research for a more enhanced new program recommendations. And with that, I'll open it up for some questions and the recommended motion for the resolution about the manual.
Thank you for the recommended motion. Then we have a motion from council.
Do we need to have a resolution number with us or is that on the next one?
I think that's on the next.
Okay, just making sure. Perfect. Um, I move to approve the proposed resolution to update the Fair Share Administrative Manual.
Excellent. Do we have council discussion? Oh, excuse me. Wait, first I'll open the public hearing. No public hearing. Okay. No public hearing live or virtual. Okay, thank you, sorry. Um, then uh, council discussion. Counselors?
How many times have we tried to get uh, we went out for like RFP to try to get someone to update our fair share? Um, I know, because we've been working on this for a long time.
Yes, this has been um, a process. I I believe it started actually before the Housing Innovation Division was created. It was that summer of twenty twenty-one. Um, I believe it went out first for RFP and then it went out again a little bit revised. And then we strategically did it again um, in the fall of twenty twenty-two. And that tied in with the DOLA uh, Department of Local Affairs opportunity through House Bill twelve seventy-one uh, and their planning grant for innovative housing and affordable strategies.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's been a long time coming. I think it's gonna be great and really help the city bridge those gaps and um, and I just want to say the work you've done and the creativity that your department um, shows time to time again, um, in getting these projects built and more affordable housing. Um, you know, in the market is just phenomenal. And so thank you so much for your hard work, Community Development's hard work. I appreciate it. And I know our community appreciates it as well.
I believe that's the City Attorney's Office. We did have a public comment for the items on the agenda for eight, nine, and eleven. So this is eleven. Uh, but I would move on the procedure issue with the City Attorney's Office on whether on public comments allowed or not.
I think a public comment would be allowed.
All right, let's go ahead and have um, the public comment, please. I'll open the public hearing. And I think we might have had someone virtually that wanted to speak.
Uh, yes, Mayor, we have Julie Cooley who raised her hand, but just lowered it.
Mute. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Um, thank you. Um, I, my first time that I have listened in this way and it's fun, but I was a little concerned about whether I get to talk or not. Um, I am Julie Cooley. I live at thirty-five ten Bennett Street. And I am on the NINA Board, the Neighbors in Need Alliance. So first I wanted to thank the city and the council for the work that you do in supporting the homeless in our area, like Manna and some of the other programs that you support. I wanted to comment to the fair share program and invite you to look at it a little bigger. Um, one of the things that I'm seeing in reading lately is that the impact of requiring parking spaces has resulted in higher housing prices. And I'm wondering if we can't, as a city, maybe we can bargain with the developers and say, hey, we got a deal for you. You don't have to have any required parking spaces. Because the truth of the matter is, they will get enough to sustain their development. But you don't have to have parking spaces and at the same time, if you are going to do the fair share, you're gonna pay more. You're gonna pay enough to actually have an impact. And there's, there's other things that have been happening in the world. Um, Austin has just adopted this plan. Seattle has adopted a plan and what they found is that it brought building costs down substantially and it did not result in parking problems. So that's my two cents for tonight. Thank you all very much for what you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, any other council discussion? All right, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item twelve point one. This is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth for operating expenditures for the city of Durango. Staff will um, start with a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, I'm Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer, um, here to present um, the public hearing and the first reading to consider the twenty twenty-four operating um, appropriation ordinance first. So as part of the annual budgeting process and in compliance with Article five, Section six of the City Charter, the City Council shall adopt the final budget in a timely manner before the start of the ensuing budget year and pass the necessary appropriation ordinance. So this will be the public hearing to consider the twenty twenty-four annual appropriation ordinance for operating and the first reading of the ordinance. So the City Council received the proposed budget in October. We went through the reconciliation in November as well as an additional public hearing to include the highway user tax funds. Um, so the total expenditures on the operating budget um, before you this evening is a hundred and twenty-eight million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. And council sets forth the spending limits um, for the annual uh, budget. So just to kind of bring that into, um, what does that mean? So I wanted to take some time to share what this budget will accomplish by strategic plan goal area for the year twenty twenty-four. So starting off with financial excellence and high-performing government. Um, there will be a refresh to the city of Durango strategic plan. We will continue the Baldridge performance excellence work. Uh, we'll upgrade new programs that better assist with legal document preparation and review. The employee engagement survey will go out in twenty twenty-four. We're gonna be moving to a seven-one um, benefit plan uh, renewal, um, which will help with our um, budget and um, also help our employees. And we are also offering a mental health first aid course for all staff. Um, always reviewing and looking at health plan design changes for benefits. We'll complete um, remaining fund balance policies. We're gonna pivot to a full um, budgeting for outcomes. Well, we will be working on a purchasing policy rewrite. Um, streamlining our processes for uh, sales tax. And we will complete the annual comprehensive financial report on time with no material findings. Uh, we will continue to further the phone system migration off the traditional um, voiceover IP system to the cloud based over to Microsoft Team Phone Systems for customer service enhancements. Um, continue standalone audiovisual technologies across the city. And we're gonna also explore a new enterprise resource planning system to seek improvements and better efficiencies. In our goal area, uh, affordability and economic opportunity. I know there's a lot on there, but my goodness, these folks are looking to accomplish a lot with this year's budget. So I'm not gonna touch on them all, but I will give you some highlights. So um, create a housing opportunity, support multi-generational mixed income community workforce and increase affordability to bridge the disparity between income and home rental prices. Advance the development of the Housing Accelerator Program to ensure housing priorities are integrated into development review decision-making. Uh, we'll participate with our key stakeholders such as the Regional Housing Authority, Economic Development Alliance and other jurisdictions in La Plata County for a three-year workforce housing investment strategy. Um, we're, we're looking in our Community Development Group to enhance customer service through an updated software and web-based services for online payments. We're gonna continue to work with La Plata County, La Plata County Economic Development Alliance um, on La Posta Road for property owners on the desired future land uses, annexation discussions and allocations of funding to be uh, being preliminary infrastructure and design for water sewer and road improvements on La Posta. Um, the newly hired code reform administrator um, will continue to engage the public and advance code amendments to address community priorities. We will continue to fund the Renew Grant, Durango Graves Grant, Midtown Peak Grant, and the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funding. And we will also continue the collaboration with the La Posta Food Equity Coalition um, Food Business Work Group to reduce barriers for immigrants, BIPOC, and food business entrepreneurs. We'll utilize the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funding to activate specific areas for new developments around Durango with a specific call to artists for those projects. Uh, we're gonna create an easier, more straightforward process for permitting food trucks around Durango. And we will focus on expanding experience, um, economic, economy sectors in Durango and the region. Um, and we'll continue to administer uh, the Midtown Peak Grant Award of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, conduct outreach and educational efforts to uh, continued support of the uh, URA and will partner with uh, private sector and nonprofit entities to help advance development and underutilized areas of the community. Moving on to enhance livability and sense of place. We, uh, this budget does include an administrative associate position to continuously update materials as needed for operations, statistics, and community outreach in our police department. We're adding call taker positions to meet the demands in the nine-one-one center for the volume, which will allow uh, personnel to focus on client agency safety and functions relating to responses. Uh, also in addition of a GIS analyst, which will address to concentrate efforts uh, specific to um, nine-one-one mapping and create compliance with national emergency standards. We will deploy psychological evaluations as part of the hiring process for nine-one-one dispatchers as a clear best practice. And we will increase the trust in the community and our police department by encouraging positive interactions through Coffee with the Cop type programs, membership by officers and on various community boards and at quarterly public meetings. We uh, plan and budget to provide the capacity and investment needed to fulfill our vision and achieve our goals in the police department. In code enforcement, um, the open space ranger initiative initiatives to increase safety and well-being um, is a continuation. And in our public library, we will work with community leaders and issue committee to formally pursue a library district ballot. And then our Parks and Recreation, we're looking to increase our scholarship funds by reaching out to the community in need um, for fundraising events to provide additional scholarships for those programs. An effective infrastructure network. In our transportation department, they'll be developing the ZEV transition plan for transit. Uh, purchase the first zero emissions fleet transit vehicle, pursue free fair summer um, to increase transit ridership and reduce ground level ozone. Um, implement recommendations in the comprehensive parking management plan. They'll compete, complete the peak demand price and CBD. Implement additional information for parking supply availability and redesign of the parking website. At our airport, um, we'll encourage maximum airline seat capacity within the market through our air service and develop airport marketing initiatives. Um, we're looking to update the airport website in twenty twenty-four and complete a feasibility study for future aircraft deicing locations. For um, water and sewer, um, council will be asked in twenty twenty-four for their input on the new water sewer rate study. And also in the utilities department, we'll be working with IT um, to be making data-driven decisions where our city network and databases um, will allow for us to read that total flow and total alarm notifications from each lift station. This will better inform staff for implement changes to reduce failure probability. We will continue to support um, in our CIP division, the design efforts and the projects as well as working to encourage more contractor involvement in the bidding and construction of projects and provide time for material orders and contractor planning and project execution. In our environmental sustainability and resiliency, we'll be supporting the positive change to the spring, uh, spring and fall cleanup program to reduce illegal dumping and increase landfill diversion. Implementation of the Power Ed program in conjunction with the EPC, the EPC through coordination with the Sustainability Cross-Functional Team. Uh, completion of the facilities upgrade through the EPC, including HVAC upgrades um, in Carnegie, a board and state grant. Completing the organics waste study and plan through twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, implementing a composting community grant rebate program similar to the very successful e-bike rebate program. Uh, run another successful household hazardous uh, waste event in conjunction with La Plata County. We'll be implementing another year of the e-bike, e-bike rebate program, serving at least fifty residents and will complete a city fleet inventory and conduct EV transition analysis. Uh, we will also continue the management and establishment of programs, including the Green Durango Grants, Green Business Certification, Pumpkin and Leaf Drop Off. In engaged collaborative government, we're gonna be looking to reduce and streamline workflow in municipal court. Um, additional training to elevate a license, licensing clerk to a deputy clerk position. Redesign of the city website in part to meet the uh, demands of the ADA compliance. We'll expand the use of the new public engagement platform, Connect and Engage. Collaborate with our new community engagement specialist on methodologies and implementation and our new marketing specialist within human resources. And we will bolster community outreach engagement with the goal of creating more approaches and transparent processes related to business retention and expansion. And finally, in diversity, equity, inclusion, um, we will continue to offer the language letting. We will add an alternative defense counsel contract to provide a verified public defendants for all defendants and in-person court certified speaking interpretation. Um, translation services related to the Engage uh, forum. Increase inclusive engagement with mobile home parks for sanitary sewer outflow and emergency response plans and translating the Water Keepers Workbook for elementary school engagement in Spanish. Expanding the water rebate program to focus and include marginalized communities and as well as updating um, bilingual communications around our signage. So with that, um, if if anyone wanted to know more, our budget is um, posted on the uh, city website. We do utilize OpenGov for creating our budget, distributing our budget, as well as our financial transparency portal. And just a little bit um, to talk about next steps. So here we are today. We're doing the public hearing on the appropriation ordinance um, for operating and then capital. This followed by the first reading of the ordinance for operating in capital. These will be two separate um, for uh, public hearings and ordinances. December fifth, we'll have the final reading and final approved. Two ordinance operating in capital, um, we'll have three resolutions for capital operating in the mill levy certification from the county. And then the budget is adopted. And then by January thirty-first, um, staff will submit the adopted budget to the Department of Local Affairs. And we will publish the adopted budget online through OpenGov as well as a PDF and we'll submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association for the distinguished budget award. And so there's um, two items on here. So first is the public hearing and then the second is related to the first reading.
Thank you so much for that very good recap. Um, I'll just remind council and the public that we have, as you've seen through this presentation, had thorough reviews of the budget and the operating procedures during our budget retreat and our budget study session where council had the opportunity to get all the details, ask questions and have dialogue about the various expenditures associated with the budget. These previous discussions allow us the opportunity tonight to go through the These previous discussion allows the opportunity tonight to go through the procedural processes for consideration of approval during our regular city council business agenda. And with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move to, oh, is there an ordinance number? Sorry, you want to open the public hearing first?
Do, but we do, doing, okay, I will open the public hearing. And we're going to be accepting live and virtual comments. Do we have any, anyone who would like to comment? No one virtually either? Okay, I'm seeing no. I will close the public hearing and with that, can we have a council discussion? Counselors?
I, I can.
Oh, now we need a motion. Thank you.
What, do we have the ordinance number?
So the ordinance number won't be assigned until the final reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purposes as set forth below for operating expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado for the 2024 budget year.
Second.
Great. Council discussion.
Shall I start? Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I look forward to having the first five minutes to voice my concerns and questions. And I had brought some of them up during the retreat, but the recordings of relatively poor quality, so I'm partially repeating myself so that the public can have access to that. And I acknowledge we're in a very good financial condition with the budget showing a total fund balance at the start of 2024 of 116 million, of which 75 million is for operating funds. And I thank you for correcting the initial budget where it showed a mathematical error with a 40 million difference. And the budget shows that we expect us to spend the budget down about 50 million, of which the operating budget contains 14 million. But my concerns are that this budget is unrealistic and unnecessarily complex with some information that I would consider useful, missing, or not clear. And that results in concerns with transparency, access to information and our ability to provide financial and fiscal oversight. And I'll explain that in more detail while keeping my comments for the capital projects separate for the next agenda item. So first I compared the budget with prior year budgets. So if we budget well and everything goes as planned with revenues and expenses, the end of the fund balance, end of the year fund balance would be the same as the beginning of the year fund balance for the next year. Similar as your bank statement on December 31st would be the same the next year, January 1st. So comparing this year's budget, 2023 budget with the 2024 budget, we are 48 million off. And I went back as far as 20, the 2020 budget, so three, three, four years back. And we've been off every year ranging from 16 to 48 million. That is significant. And if you compare this with actual audit numbers, which are only available in the July or later of the following year, it seems we're off in a similar order of magnitude. So that seems to be to indicate that our budgets have not been very realistic. I also tried to compare the beginning of the year fund balance in the 2024 budget with the current or most recent fund balance that we now have in the city, so year to date. What do we have in the bank? I asked the city manager and I even did an open records request for that fund balance and unfortunately I did not get a clear dollar amount answer. Instead, I received a 52-page report with all individual funds and expenses, charges, projects, and basically saying for me to somehow add it all up. And just so it's clear, we have about 30 funds. Now, I'm quite familiar with the financial structure of our city, so I probably can get to that. But I find it hard to believe that the average citizen in our community would do so. I'm not sure what to say about transparency on this. I would expect that anybody who asks their bank how much money they have in their bank and they get a 52-page document with statements and charges, that that person would switch banks. The end result of this current fund balance, or the absence of, is that it's not clear how the forecasted beginning of the year total fund balance compares to what we currently or most recently have visible in our bank. It might mean that we're off again for multiple dollars, multiple millions of dollars. So that is all just the very basic fund balance. Another key concern is the, in my opinion, unnecessary complexity of the financial structure, which I suggest could be more consistent with the audited financial reports and would be more transparent. One major issue here is the amount of transfers we have internally between the many funds. It seems we have around 92 million of such transfers, of which I believe about 11 million, a smaller portion, is necessary for actual internal services that are provided between departments, divisions. An example being insurance. I had asked for better information on this, but have not yet received a clear answer besides some related to the internal services part. The high amount of transfers between funds complicates the financial structure and transparency as well as the ability to provide financial oversight. But it may also increase the risk of potential fraud, invisible, et cetera. Similar as last year, I have made, I have made the suggestion to reduce the number of funds.
Thank you, Councilor Bosman. That's five minutes.
Yeah.
Other counselors? Comments? Counselor Yasi?
When I first came to city council and I saw this Open Gov with all the transparency in the way the accounts and balances, transfers, everything is laid out. I was just impressed because I've been on other boards and agencies where you can't follow the numbers. This Open Gov, I think is excellent. So I would disagree with Counselor Bosman's and say thank you for bringing this to Durango. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate your hard work in explaining how, how this all comes together. So it's greatly appreciated. So thank you, Devin.
Other counselor comments?
Just real quick, having been a new counselor, also going through that budgetary retreat was eye-opening and enlightening. So thank you for dumbing it down for me so I could understand what all goes through. I mean, and all the work on the backend that you all do, just to make sure that given us all the information. Sometimes it is a lot to go through, but it's kind of what we set out for. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to really explain it to us and hopefully we are able to provide a little clarity to the rest of anybody about what we're doing and how we're doing it and how we're spending our harder taxpayer money. So thank you.
Great. Okay. Unless you're responding to comments that have been made by other counselors. No. Motion dies. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman's?
No.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to 12.2, a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amount and for the purposes as set forth for capital expenditures for the city of Durango. Another staff presentation? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer. This is the public hearing and first reading to consider the 2024 Capital Appropriation Ordinance and the public hearing. So again, as part of the annual budget process and in compliance with Article 5, Section 6 of the city charter, the city council shall adopt a final budget in a timely manner prior to the start of the suing budget year and shall pass the necessary appropriation ordinance. A public hearing to consider the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance for Capital in the first reading. Again, this is the high-level summary. The city council received the entire budget proposal in October. We did two additional sessions in August as related to the capital projects as the study sessions. And then we went through reconciliation in November as well as a public hearing. And so council would be setting forth the spending limits of 101,417,445 dollars for capital. And what will this accomplish? And so wanted to share again for the city council and what the capital budget will accomplish by strategically on goal areas. And so the city will be looking to do city civic center complex funding, complete the remaining fund balance policies for our capital, pivot to the full budgeting for outcomes and then the, as well as the purchasing policy rewrite. In affordability and economic opportunity, advance division of Durango Mesa, including annexation of the 1,900 acres, emergency access dedication, final design for water sewer, road, infrastructure, implementation of the master plan phase one of public amenities for the bike trails and coordinate installation of the public art piece Common Threads. And enhance livability and sense of place, complete Schneider Park improvements with entry and decantaminations stations at Lake Night Horse, complete construction on Animus River Trail, Santa Rita to Albertson's, continue to work with the Durango Mesa Park Foundation on initiating and development of the infrastructure of the Phase One Bike Park. Work with the community to reauthorize the 2005 sales tax to continue to provide long-term options for maintenance of parks and recreation facilities and development of new facilities. The Smart 160 Trail, Greenmont Cemetery Irrigation Replacements and Chapman Hills Ski Area. And I'm just highlighting some of the bigger projects as well. In our effective infrastructure network, County Road 250, 251, North College Drive and the Durango Mesa Access Road, our couple of the road projects included. Continuation and design of accessibility at transit stop improvements along North Main. In 2024, the multimodal division will focus on moving existing projects forward and completing, completing as many designs as possible. Projects include Rusi Connect, Eighth Avenue and College and the Midtown Safety and More. We will initiate construction of Phase One B of the Terminal Expansion Project. Complete construction of Phase One of the landing parking development. Initiate design of Phase Two of landslide parking development and complete the commercial apron concrete joint seal projects. In our utilities division, they did a 2023, completed a collection system assessment, which will help them with a five-year replacement schedule. And environmental sustainability and resiliency, installation of up to four E V fast charging stations at the transit center as well as our store water projects for downtown 13th Street, Forest Avenue and El Paso. And in engaged collaborative governance, expand the use of the new public engage platform on the city website for connect and engage to showcase those large capital projects for the community as well as continue utilization of focus groups for connect and engage for capital projects, for example, the 14th, 15th and 3rd and the city civic center. And in diversity, equity, inclusion, terminal phase is going to include a family restroom and a nursing room as well as the ADA improvements that are included in our multimodal projects under the 2015 sales tax. So again, our budget is available to view online through Open Gov. And just a recap of our next steps. I know I just covered this one, but I'll screen through it. So public hearing of the appropriation ordinances operating in capital, first reading of the ordinances operating in capital. December 5th, we'll have the final reading and approval of the two budget appropriations. We'll have three resolutions for capital operating the mill levy certifications and at that point, the budget is adopted. By January 31st of 2024, we will submit the budget to the Department of Local Affairs. We will publish the adopted budget online through Open Gov as well as a PDF and we will submit that to the Government Finance Officers Association for the distinguished budget award. So same thing as last time, we do have the public hearing and the first reading.
Thank you so much, Devin. Okay, I'm going to start with a motion from council to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Can we open the public hearing now? We'll take live and virtual comments. No comments. I'll close the public hearing and with that, can I have a motion from council?
Okay. I thought you were going to go, so I was going to let you. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purposes as set forth below for capital expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado for the 2024 budget year.
All second? Sorry, we really, you served. With that, can we have council discussion?
Shall I do the honors again a little bit faster this time? I, I think the problem here with the fund balances is that we have an unrealistic amount of capital projects, which is 99 million in the current agenda package. Again, comparing this to prior years, in 2022, we completed six and a half, excluding the airport, six and a half million out of 31 million budget, which is a fifth. For 2023, we have an amended budget on capital projects for 70 million and the actual year to date on Open Gov today is 12 million. Are we really expecting to spend 58 million in capital projects in one and a half months from now on? I had asked city for a clear update on how many capital projects in the current year we have and how much we expect to complete. And we have, I have not gotten that information yet in a clear manner, which could be a one-page summary. I had it before for 2022. So we keep budgeting for an unrealistic amount of capital projects, 99 million dollars, something we never even came remotely close to in my time on council. And committing 99 million dollars for capital projects has consequences because even we missed opportunities to fund projects that could have moved forward versus the ones that were in the budget, but don't move forward. Or we could save our taxpayers quite a bit of money, an example being that we actually approved a loan, a lease purchase agreement for about 5 million that costs our taxpayers about 2 million dollars in loan setup fees and interest. Maybe we should reconsider that, but it takes three, three councils to do that. So my potential solution I brought forward is to include in the budget only those capital projects that have bids or are extremely likely to proceed and to remove those that are not certain. And still work on those projects as well as more projects for that matter. And we can appropriate at any time or mid-year as needed. I'm also concerned about the amount of money that goes to consultants, even though the physical projects may not take place or in a, in a timely manner, meaning the study may never, may have to be redone. I had asked for the amount of money going to consultants versus physical projects as well as a number of projects, but I have not gotten that information either. And similar question relating to transparency and access to information, it may be beneficial to have a comparisons, the comparison of the budgeted cost for capital projects versus the actual incurred cost for those projects. Are we close to what we budget for? And there are many capital projects I have concerns about, but I also, I hope it's clear as well that I have many projects I do support, so that's not only negative. One of them is the downtown next steps, the cost of 1.2 million over multiple years going to consultants. We have 75 businesses that were voicing their concerns on Main Street. And I believe there was only 11 businesses, mostly restaurants, that took advantage of the pump ups. If this project moves forward, regardless, I have no idea if the cost 50 or 100 million or whatever it is, will also require financing. And it seems to focus on the curbside dining and pedestrian. And cyclists seem to be less left out, for example, because they're pushed to the roads and help slowing down traffic. And I'm not against downtown Main Street improvements or redesign. I think we need to do better. Similar on the raw pipe, raw water pipeline from Lake Night Horse. A study alone is 2 million, the execution of the project probably 20 to 30 million. And, and I believe we should have better discussion on how we achieve resilience in both water supply as well as treatment. Or concerns about capital projects that have been on the budget for many years without being done, such as the 3 million dollar gallon, 3 million gallon water tank. Or another project where Or another project where I took as an example where I asked for information to see if our process of handling capital projects works. What alternatives were considered and if an analysis was done, multiple bits obtained, this was still two years ago, still not received that information. I'm gonna continue. Some of the budget items seem to be a blank check to a department or division of the city. And an example is the pilot program for the leasing for locals from which the city has committed seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in funds. Without any public meeting or presentation of the workings or expenses of that pilot program to council.
Thank you, Councilor Bosman. Other counselors? Comments? No other comments. May we have a roll call, please?
Can I make a motion for an extended three minutes to continue my comments on this topic?
Motion dies. May we have a roll call without a second?
Counselor Bosman?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes, thank you. All right, with that, we're moving on to twelve point three. A public hearing and introduction of ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding procedures. Commission structure and accessory dwelling units. We have Scott Shine and Lily Oswald.
You're Madam Mayor, members of the council. Budget and land use code amendments doesn't get much more thrilling than that, so thanks for hanging with us. This is a full package. This ordinance before you touches on all seven chapters of the land use and development code. Primarily because it changes a reference to or references to a board or commission that is. Set up by the land use and development code, so a lot of the chapters are just changing a name, just so you have a sense of. Tell me, you can pull up the presentation. So you have a sense of why it spans all seven chapters. As I said before, this came out of a lot of strategic plan objectives regarding the development review process. Thinking about how and why we have procedures in place and looking for best practices in that regard. It also came from council direction on reviewing the overall city boarding commission structure. We took some action back in April, I believe it was, related to advisory boards. And made some adjustments there. We pulled this piece out. We felt like we needed a little more time and more dialogue with the community and with commission members. To think through how we wanted to reconfigure the community development boards and commissions and we, we continue to do that. And a little bit of a spoiler, but I'm happy to report that the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposal that's before you tonight. So we feel like that extra time was really warranted to have that dialogue and build that trust. So, so that's the biggest piece is reconfiguring or re-envisioning the community development boards and commissions. There are some procedural updates that we're also proposing and like I said before, minor ADU program updates. We'll start with a little bit about the proposed Community Development Commission. After this long dialogue and engagement with the community on possibilities and really there's infinite numbers of ways that you could set this up. Communities doing a lot of different ways. But we took that input from our current commission and board members as, as well as customers and community members. With these four points sort of at the, at the forefront of our minds is we wanted to have a process for development review that was better integrated. So when we think about design of a building, when you think about the site and how it's laid out, when we think about utilities and engineering. When we think about how it aligns with other goals like housing or economic development. We wanted a singular commission that could sort of factor in all of those things and do it. And, you know, hopefully one meeting instead of multiple meetings and spacing things out and extending timeframes. So we feel like moving from multiple boards and commissions into this holistic and integrated board really helps us achieve. That clarity and that, that integrated approach. We also want a standing commission that can help us. Update and improve outdated plans and guidelines that we have. Some of our design guidelines that we apply to projects are, have not been updated since two thousand and seven. We have a comprehensive plan that was adopted in two thousand and seventeen that we want to update because the world has changed significantly since two thousand and seventeen. So we want a commission that we can engage in those types of conversations and not just react to development proposals. And talk about how big are the windows or what color is the wall or those types of things. We needed that, that broader community voice about how we want to grow, where we want to grow, what is the character of the community? That we want to make sure we maintain as we grow, those types of things that are incorporated into guiding documents. And then we apply to individual projects either through staff review or, or a public hearing process. We really feel like we need to spend some time in the, in the coming years updating those documents and making sure they're current. And this commission will help us do that. We wanted to seek the right fit regarding representation. So we have out of the, the seven member board that we're proposing, we have two slots that have some qualifications around. Architecture, design or planning experience because we want to retain some of that expertise, but we don't want to weight it too much towards. Sort of industry insiders or special interests or anything. So we didn't choose to make that a majority. We want the voice of the community on this commission. So we only proposed two out of the seven members to have specific qualifications. The rest just need to be citizens of the community. Lastly, we wanted to take this step because as you know, preparing for, for meetings, preparing packets, minutes. All of that takes a lot of time, a lot of administrative oversight. We feel like we could use our, our teams. Energy and, and time and, and more effective ways to update these plans. To provide customer service instead of doing sort of meeting administrative things. So this consolidation will help us. Really maximize our staff resources towards what will have the highest impact. I won't go through all these, but this is just a summary of the ways that we've reached out to the community. We've tried to keep council and planning commission. Updated throughout the process and you can see all of these, these meetings and updates we had. We had a community open house in October to talk about these proposed updates. And we had a joint PC and DRB Planning Commission, the Design Review Board Study Session. On October twelfth to talk about options and come up with the final proposal. Like I said, at that public hearing in October, Plating Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposal that's before you tonight. Very excited to now have Lily share some more details on the proposal.
Thank you. As you can see, there have been a variety of opportunities hosted for feedback and discussion, at least specifically on this topic item. And they substantially precede me, but I'm happy to be here with you all today, Madam Mayor and Council. So this first piece, the Community Development Commission is proposed and a lot of the pieces that were direct items for feedback, which we received throughout. These many meetings and facilitated discussions with council, with board and commission members, with the city, with community members. And with different departments have resulted in direct feedback and incorporated within the red line instrument which you see today. Some of these things related to membership and qualifications and the duties and responsibilities for this proposed new commission, Scott touched on. But this is proposed and has resulted in a seven member board as opposed to the current five member E board right now. Two of those members would have training and experience with architecture, landscape, architecture, urban design, urban planning or related fields as it reads. And again, these members are appointed by council, so that will be an item for consideration during that membership and approval process. Some other feedback received and items of specific incorporation throughout this topic are related to agenda improvements. And that could be related to having an opportunity for better facilitation from staff and ideas for us to make sure this is. An effective board moving forward that's holistic as mentioned, which is an overarching goal throughout this. And also an opportunity for not just review and decision, but also an opportunity for feedback on policy and design guideline matters. Other things that we've been reminded of throughout this process and we've reestablished the importance of the training on meeting procedures and the boards and commissions manual. This is within our code and in the charter and this will be included in the orientation process. And we'll ensure that this remains a focal point throughout this board and again on the agenda as it moves forward. It's also brought future opportunities to update the design guidelines as we've also mentioned. And some community engagement, community first approaches to updating those existing documents and design guidelines. And with this board, the Community Development Commission currently provides administrative support for the Planning Commission and Design Review Board. Which is being represented here as the Community Development Commission, which as proposed would act as the board of adjustment during very specific. Items of consideration or during appeals and things like that when it's appropriate. The other three boards and commissions that the Community Development Department provides administrative support for. Is the Historic Preservation Board, the Creative Economy Commission and the Urban Renewal Authority. No proposed changes are before you tonight with those three boards and commissions. We have noted that the Creative Economy Commission sunsets mid-two thousand and twenty-four at this time. And that will be when the creative district will assume the role of managing that commission and those responsibilities moving forward. And I also want to point out the format of these slides too, if this works. At the top, it will show the topic within the ordinance and then the red line items and there will be a number. And that's in an effort to make sense of the very large suite of code changes within the exhibit. And on the ordinance itself, those items are numbered and included on this presentation. The anticipated next steps specifically for these code amendments and also for this topic. Are the city council consideration in the first public hearing tonight and then the second and final reading later in December. And then in December, having an open window for the Community Development Commission or CDC applications. We will ensure that this process moving forward is consistent with the Clerks Department and the process for membership appointment. Because this is a little bit different than the typical appointment schedule of other city boards and commissions. And then in January two thousand and twenty-four, the Planning Commission will host its last scheduled regular meeting. The effective date of these proposed text amendments is February first, so that's when these would kick into gear. And then in February two thousand and twenty-four, the city council will conduct interviews for the new CDC and appoint those new members. In February of two thousand and twenty-four, that Community Development Commission will meet for its first time and go through its orientation on their meeting process. And again, we will ensure that the future terms will be staggered and aligned with the general cities boards and commissions appointment and membership schedule. The second topic within this suite of amendments is related to process and public hearings. And this aligns with updated statutes and House bills as well as is an emerging best practice of comparable communities. And is something that the city has been interested in doing for a while. And as such, city staff and the community development staff have identified four opportunities for process improvements, which are included in this table. It might be hard to read. And those are related to replats, which as mentioned are boundary adjustments and are kind of. Considered small in scale, typically not very typical, difficult to represent within a land use application. Because otherwise they need code and don't have to meet a lot of design guidelines, but it's typically a minor adjustment for a boundary. Final development plans, the minor planned development amendments and minor subdivision applications. And a minor subdivision is a subdivision resulting in five or fewer lots. So again, these were all an opportunity to scale to the appropriate level of review while still ensuring that public comment and public noticing. Will continue to be involved without losing that site because that is still remainder and a focal point for the customer service. And for transparency and engage community goals that the city, the strategic plan and the community development department have. And that's done through noticing, through public hearings with, in this table, the CDC, so the Community Development Commission has proposed. Through postings, through postcards and publishings and things like that. And this is also an effort to align with the city's focus on organizational excellence and high performance. And particularly how it supports improved customer service, like I said, and strategic plan improvements. Yeah. Yes, thank you. So yeah, it's again maybe hard to read. This table is in an effort to sort of summarize in an illustrative way. These four processes which are included in these red lines. So the admin is administrator, which in the sense of the land use and development code is a planner or someone that has been delegated by. Staff and the Community Development Director to be processing those applications. The CDC is the Proposed Community Development Commission, but right now the Planning Commission and CC is the City Council. R is for recommending body and then D is for deciding body. So D in this table would be, for instance, for replats. Currently, we receive an application for replat, so if someone wanted to adjust their boundary line twenty feet this way for a gas line. And we would process that application, they pay a fee that would then have to be noticed and staff reports concluded and everything else for the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would conduct a public hearing and give a recommendation of that application to city council. So they would recommend approval or recommend denial of the replat. And then it would go in front of city council again with additional publications and publishings. And city council would consider the recommendation made by Planning Commission, but act on that actual application. Does that make sense? Okay. And the third and last topic of discussion in today's agenda is the accessory dwelling unit or ADU program. Staff considers these changes mostly clarifying elements and pretty small in scale. These updates include clarifying the integrated or attached ADU shared wall requirements. The parking requirements related to street drainage and the proximity of street types as defined in our land use code and by engineering. As well as clarifying floor area calculation for detached and integrated ADUs. All of these text amendments are intended again to provide flexibility for these applications to go through the pipeline and not just get stuck at the beginning. As well as consistency for staff to process these ADUs and provide additional affordable units to the city's housing stock as a result. The review criteria for text amendments for the land use and development code are defined in section six, three, thirteen dash three of the land use and development code. These four criteria for decision are defined on this slide. Staff has reviewed and finds that the proposed amendments meet all of these applicable criteria. Today, as part of the public hearing and first reading of this ordinance, we have not received any public comment. In response to noticing for these public hearings and facing and following months of community engagement. The Planning Commission, as we have reiterated a few times tonight, but we're very excited to report that the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval. Of these text amendments during a public hearing held on October twenty-third of this year. And our recommended motion is provided on this slide. Again, this would be to update portions. Of all seven chapters within the land use and development code with the topics that have been defined today.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm gonna start with a motion from council and then I'll open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Sure. You can do that. Okay, I will open the public hearing then. Thank you. Any live or virtual comments? Yes. Waiting for virtual comments for public hearing.
Yeah, we have one here. Julie Cooley, go ahead.
Hi, Julie Cooley here. I just wanted to comment that although I know the council did not. Support governor policies changes that would have affected ADU. I, as a citizen, certainly support them and would like council to take a look at. Really just doing away with the idea of an ADU regulation. What the original proposal at the state level was is that the. If the zoning, in other words, if we say if you have X amount of square feet, you can have a duplex. Or if you have X amount of square feet, you have a single family and an ADU. All of those would help with our current housing crisis. I'd just like to say, get rid of the whole requirements for ADU. I'd just like to say, get rid of the whole requirements for ADU and for the zoning of, for instance, residential one. I think the governor is right. We as cities have failed, and it's very evident when you look at the cost of housing here. It's not the only influence, but a major one. So just want to put that out there and hope that in the future you will look at that as an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals that would like to comment? No other. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And can I have another motion from council? Can we put that back up, the recommended?
I move to approve the ordinance, yeah, my mic's off. I move to approve the ordinance to update portions of chapters one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven of the LUDC with the finding that the proposal complies with the criteria for text amendments as described in the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code.
I'll second. Okay. My counsel, Ozzy's seconds. And can we have council discussion?
I've got, oh, you go first. Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Who would the administrator be on the CDC? It says in the packet that would be an administrator or designate who?
The liaison, the liaison. Current, within our community development staff?
Well, the Community Development Commission, that's as proposed, they said that the leader would be a administrator. Who would the administrator be?
Would that be Daniel? Is that what the question is?
I think I understand. The LUDC refers to an administrator. It's a formal designation in the LUDC, capital A, administrator. That's typically the Community Development Director. But so like when any time permit assigned or anything like that, the administrator signs it. Right now, Daniel Murray, our Development Services Manager, is the staff person to the Planning Commission. He would most likely continue in that role for CDC to kind of do the organization, kind of be the, like Jose is to council, be that staff connection.
Thank you for clarifying that. Also, is commercial property under the purview of these proposed changes?
It's for all, it depends. So these proposed changes, again, for ADUs and things like that, it affects different parking standards and things like that for all zoning districts. So technically, yes. For process improvements, things of that realm, again, those are sort of, I see them as different buckets. So you could do a replat on commercial property. You could do a replat on, you know, residentially zoned property as well. So in that, like lens, it would affect commercially zoned properties?
Potentially a hotel could go up that would just go through the CDC and not through council.
Those would typically be?
Yes.
Plan developed? Yes?
Okay. So I guess for me, city councils are voted elected officials that are representative votes of the community. I worry that there's potential for something to get approved or not approved through the CDC that council may think is okay or not representative of the community. I struggle with council input not being taken into consideration for major projects that fall into the category of a minor subdivision. What if we think that a 500 unit residence or complex is needed within the city limits, but the CDC Board disagrees? I understand that there will be public input through public hearings and meetings, but I worry that not taking council input or taking it out of this process leaves out an important public engagement step. So I really struggle with this, because everything else I absolutely agree with, but I feel like we are the representative elected voice of the community. And when something big comes up, people come to us. They're like, hey, this is a good idea, or this isn't a good idea. We have to be the ones that kind of follow the sword or be like, we get to celebrate that success. So I'm concerned that we're not being taken into consideration.
Yeah, one, I, yeah, I can understand that. One thing I will say too with the proposed changes, although it's hard to navigate through the red lines and the current land use bill in my code in general. One thing, because staff doesn't necessarily want to always be that person anyway, processing something like a 500 unit development, not that that would necessarily take place throughout this, but in the land use code existing, but we've also reiterated it in two different places with these proposed red lines, is for staff to retain the opportunity to defer either a review or decision of these administrative applications to the Proposed Community Development Commission. And the appealing body for the Community Development Commission is the council. So for these larger projects, there's an opportunity for enhanced public hearing opportunities for the Community Development Commission to review and or decide them, as well as if an application took place in a certain way, it would have the opportunity to be heard at some point potentially by the city council.
Who would decide if it's important enough to bring to council or big enough?
The administrator or the team. We, for larger projects like that, I would very likely see that going deferred. It's things where it is a boundary adjustment or things like that that typically aren't as politicized. But for larger projects, we wanted to make sure that was retained in the code as an opportunity for moving forward. Two more to add? Yeah.
So it's a really good point, Counsel Woodruff, and we try and find that right scale or right size of review, because, you know, bringing something to council has that added time component. It has the added administrative responsibility and sometimes is very warranted and very important. What we tried to do is pull out four things that out of probably like three or four dozen permit or project types. Can I cut off here?
Yeah, you're cut off. Yeah.
Out of about, you know, probably about four dozen project types, we're proposing updates to four of them. So I just want to reassure you that there's a wide range of project types. Most of them are either like a plan development, a major subdivision, or have some other component that requires council review. So we're not, we're definitely not taking a majority or a big change out of council purview. These things, and I'll just give an example later tonight, you have a request for a public hearing. It's a two lot split on West Second Avenue. Meets all of the code standards, no public comment, really straightforward. But because now minor subdivisions need to come to council, that process is taking, you know, eight to 12 weeks instead of probably four to six weeks. When it's, you know, it's a two lot split, not changing the character of the community, not, you know, no public comment. So we tried to find those projects that when they come to council, everyone's like, we give a presentation, it's two minutes, and you're like, okay, let's move on. So it has been the things that are more routine. So, but I hear what you're saying and, and we definitely factor that in and want to retain the ability to level up the review when it's more contentious or bigger.
I guess my counter to that is that the BLD apartments, that's a, that was a minor subdivision, but 497 units. You know, so that to me is a major, you know, development.
And that did come to council for the plan development review, which is actually, you know, the density, the design of the buildings, the layout of the site. It came back for the minor subdivision, which was just creating that line that said, we're going to do phase one and then phase two. It didn't have the consequence, didn't impact the layout of the site or things like that. That still would come to council. But that subdivision where after the fact they came back and were like, oh, we need to split this for kind of financial reasons, that wouldn't come back to council. But still, the, the actual project, the design of it, that would still come to you.
Thank you.
Differentiate between those types, but appreciate the thoughtful.
Thank you so much. Other council comments?
Yeah, I just wanted, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to say I appreciate the red line, because to me that makes it a lot easier. I think it makes sense to have combined those boards into the one Community Development Commission, especially if they support it all, and then streamlining the process for decisions. And, and I noticed there's still that process for appeals up a level, including for variances. I've heard various concerns from our community about process complexity and the time constraints. And I think hopefully this will address that. So that's good, even though it's only four or five items on the bigger list, but appreciate it.
Yeah.
Other council comments? All right, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counsel Bosmans?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
And Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving on to item 12.4, a public hearing and introduction of ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding the fair share program. Eva, I think you're joining us again.
Thank you, Tom. Eva Hinson, Housing Innovation Manager. Before you two discuss and review the proposed ordinances regarding the fair share program. I need to go forward. I follow you. Yeah. Thank you for your patience in buying slides. There we go. Great. This is a staff initiated request to amend the Land Use and Development Code regarding the fair share program. Minor edits either simplify processes or improve clarity and consistency. That's some of the feedback actually that we've learned this past year and a half with the Housing Innovation Division by doing some of these projects in the pipeline. References to the Regional Housing Alliance, again, to change to now the city's partner, nonprofit partner with Homes Fund. Keep that flexibility as we navigate the complexities of attainable and affordable housing with those changes into the Fair Share Administrative Manual from time to time due to market conditions. And the most substantial changes are reducing the barrier of, again, the no allowed third party subsidies to enhance and change that for potential public private partnerships with developers, the city, or with other nonprofit entities. So a little bit about fair share. As I mentioned earlier with the resolution, it was adopted in 2009 and is an inclusionary zoning program. Inclusionary, inclusionary zoning programs are widespread, but mostly in areas with expensive housing markets and require developers to provide a set amount of set aside units for affordability and attainability. In Durango specifically, that amount is currently 16% of the project for four or more units that are for sale homeownership and may be provided by either building the fair share units, paying a fee in lieu, or providing land. Since 2009, approximately $1.7 million has been collected in fee in lieu. 10 deed restricted units have been created, and approximately $1 million has been used to assist Homes Fund with their down payment mortgage assistance program and about 40 or so households so far, because there's been two more since this slide was created. And in 2021, the Housing Innovation Division was created to help administer and provide synergy within community development to create housing, to enhance multi-generational community workforce, as well as attainable and affordable housing overall, which is in the affordability and economic opportunity strategic goal. What are we doing with these fair share updates? We are organizing changes around state and federal funding programs. We want to modernize and simplify content and format and update the fair share from strictly a regulatory to reflect current housing market conditions while allowing subsidies and incentives for all potential partners. Again, with these code amendments, this is a quick fix, limited language to be updated that was provided in the package before you this evening. We want to enable city to partner and incentivize unit creation, which aligns with your strategic plan goals for the organization. And full share program changes are still to come before you. We talked a little bit about community engagement, but again, just wanted to emphasize fair shares come before you several times throughout this year. Again, will come before you at the study session as well in December for review of a new fair share program recommendations along with a community engagement forum to engage with our stakeholders and developers in particular. As well as the final reading of that ordinance will be before you on December 5th. Again, as Lily had mentioned, so just to sort of efficiently utilize our time before you, the four components of the LUDC have been met and staff finds that these proposed amendments meet that applicable criteria. We received no public comment regarding this project. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with a five to zero vote during the public hearing on October 23rd. I opened it up for questions before council and provided a recommended motion before you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, Mayor Protem Buell seconded. Do we have anyone who would like to comment? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Can we have a recommended motion from council?
I move to approve the ordinance and proposed text amendments to Chapter 5, Article 5-4, Fair Share Housing of the LUDC with the finding that the proposal complies with the criteria for text amendments as described in the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code.
Second.
Great. Counsel discussion. Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
And Counsel Bosmans?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number 13, public comment on non-agenda related items. Do we have anyone in the public who would like to speak tonight? Okay, Adam Howell? Here you go. So this public comment is for items, go ahead, not considered under our agenda this evening. Please limit discussion to three minutes. Let us know if you are a resident of the city and direct your comments to council, and we will not respond from the dais.
Okay. Hi, my name is Adam Howell. I live on Av. Del Sol. I'm a resident. The problem I have with how city officials are treating residents recently is that they appear to ignore, disregard, or misinterpret our First Amendment rights. Recently, city officials made claims through their friends at the establishment press that a local resident was harassing and intimidating public officials by emailing the city over 3,000 times. First, there is no limit to the amount of emails that a resident can send to the city to redress their grievances with city officials or city policies. Redressing your grievances is part of the First Amendment. The First Amendment gives us the right to petition our government for the redress of grievances. So how do we get to the point where city officials could get away with distorting and converting a citizen's First Amendment rights into a crime? Look out for the disdain for and ignorance that public officials have for our First Amendment rights. A common acronym for remembering the five freedoms of the First Amendment is the acronym RAP. Religion, assembly, press, petition, and speech. Ask your public servants if they know what those five freedoms are, and you may get a surprising answer. Public officials trying to convert our First Amendment rights to crimes is prevalent among city police as well. I've been coerced by cops from video recording in public buildings and from sidewalks in Durango under the guise and deceptive premise of harassment, privacy, and trespassing. That's your secret government, hard at work in an attempt to chill our First Amendment rights. Where's the transparency with our matters of extreme public interest? Press for transparency.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to comment virtually?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to introduction of ordinance and requests for public hearing. The following items are requests for public hearings that are upcoming meetings. We'll have limited discussion on these items. Just a motion from council to see if there's support to place the item on the agenda for upcoming meetings. Staff is available for questions, but staff presentations will occur at the meeting where the public is invited to participate. And when the council will vote on the merits of the matter. The first is a request for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance concerning a license agreement between Tulsa Inc. and Tesla, sorry, Inc. and the City of Durango regarding electric vehicle superchargers at the Durango Transit Center. Do I have a motion from council?
I'll move to approve a request for a public hearing.
Or set up.
Or set up. Oh, thank you. Okay, great. I'll move to set.
Oh, thank you. Okay, great. I'll move to set a public hearing introduction of ordinance concerning a license agreement between Tesla and the City of Durango regarding electric vehicle superchargers at the Durango Transit Center.
Second.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Yaazi? Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counsel Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Fourteen point two is a request for a public hearing for nineteen forty three West Second Avenue Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan. Do I have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for nineteen forty three West Second Avenue Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan.
Second.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Counsel Yaazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item fifteen, other new business. Any items from council? Seeing none, do we have any requests for excuse absences from council or? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Any opposed? No. Thank you.